All right, good evening, everyone. On behalf of Morehead City Council, welcome. It is 5:30, and we will go ahead and start our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, August the 12th, 2025, and welcome everybody being here. I'd like to recognize, although everybody in here is special guest, we have a special guest up front, Mr. Jacob Sewell, Jr., from Troop 130, and he's here to, he's working on his citizenship and community badge, and he's going to assist us in just a few moments with the Pledge of Allegiance, so he'll be leading us with our pledge, not at this moment, but I'll call you up in a few moments, okay? But, yeah, on behalf of the council, thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. All right, George, if you get the invitation, please.
I will. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we love you and thank you for this day, and we thank you for the many blessings you provide for us each and every day. We thank you for blessing us with one of the greatest places on earth to live, to work, and raise our families, Morehead City. We thank you for all who are in attendance in our meeting tonight. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity you've given our mayor, our city council, and our staff to serve Morehead City. Help us to be mindful that each one of us are in these positions to serve. We ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we lead and make decisions for our city. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Now, I'd like to recognize Jacob, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob, and keep up the good work. You're going to be a leader of this community one day, and so we're proud of you and your attendance here this evening and all your hard work to get here this evening. See, you have a lot of merit badges. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. This is a lot of housekeeping stuff that's reviewed through our committees and recommended to go on the agenda to be approved in one motion. However, any individual council member can pull any item off the consent agenda for individual consideration.
Mayor Jones, I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, Councilman Lee moved to adopt it.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bill Taylor. All right, all in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item three, public hearings. Item 3A is Consider Adoption Ordinance 2025-0-16, approving the contiguous annexation of 5046 Highway 70. And we have the documents in our packet, we support this, and this time we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I'll recognize our planning director, Sandy Watkins, to give us some background information.
Yes, sir. The city is in receipt of this request from BPFD Automotive Ventures LLC to annex 5046 Highway 70. The parcel encompasses 27 hundredths of an acre and is contiguous to the present corporate limits. Water and sewer service is not requested at this time, and any future costs associated with extending utilities to the newly annexed property would be the responsibility of the owner at the time of any such future request.
Okay. Any member of the council have any questions for Sandy? All right, thank you, Sandy. All right, I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak and reference this annexation request. Anybody for, anybody against? If not, public hearing is now closed. Okay, we'll recognize Bill, the chairman of the planning committee.
This is a standard voluntary annexation submitted by Automotive Ventures, and it did meet favorable comment at the planning committee meeting, and I would move to adopt ordinance 2025-0-13, approving the continuous annexation of 5046 Highway 70 as presented.
All right, thank you. Motion made by Bill, is there a second?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will second that motion, sir.
Seconded by Richard. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by raising your hands, it's unanimous. Okay, that is all of our public hearings this evening. Item four, new business, consider approval of the fee schedule amendments as presented. Recognize Jewel Lassiter, our finance director.
So, in front of you, you have the amendments to the fee schedule, and on the first page of Section 1 Administration where item C, return check fee, is, this is just a change instead of, excuse me, return checks and electronics payments for taxes, to separate that out individually from all other payments, because the fee for taxes is truly a penalty as defined by the statute, and processing fee is what all other payments get if they're returned. So, it's basically to separate those out, clearly identify what they are, and then request that the return check and electronic payment processing fee for all the other payments is $35.
Okay.
And then further in, the other change is under planning inspections, and that has to do with the KMA minor permit, and that's going from $100 to $119, and that's state mandated.
Anything else?
That's it.
Council have any questions for Jewel?
Yes.
Yeah? All right, thank you, Jewel.
Mayor Jones, this came out of our Finance and Administration Committee meeting.
Yes.
And I talked to Mayor Protem Baloo about it, and we don't see any objection to what was presented by Jewel and her staff, so we want to approve of this. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve of the fee schedule amendments as presented.
And I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Motion made by Lee, seconded by George. Any further discussion on that motion? Not all in favor indicate by raising your hands, unanimous. Item 4B, consider approval of the sole source exception for the procurement of vehicle equipment outfit from ECI Communications. Jewel?
So, this is a request to use the sole source exception for formal bidding. This is equipment to upfit the police vehicles. The total quote is around $107,000, $110. The purchase of the equipment itself on that is less than the threshold, however, because it is with labor and everything. Wanted to go ahead and forward and ask for authorization to do that bidding exception. It's not an ask for budget, that was approved in the prior annual budget, so...
All right.
This is based on, one of the criteria to use the sole source is standardization compatibility, and since that is where all the police vehicles are outfitted and also a close proximity to us.
Yes. Jewel, what's the threshold?
The threshold is $90 for purchases.
$90.
Meaning, like, physical goods and goods, and then services, there's this whole separate thing for services dealing with whether it's buildings or not, but these are kind of combined in one whole quote, kind of gets murky, so the whole thing's over 90.
$90,000.
$90,000?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what she meant.
Yeah.
It's in the cover memo you have.
Okay.
Just as interest, there's partly labor and a lot of materials, I'm sure. About how much material versus labor?
The, it's 80, it's about 84,000 for all the equipment. The entire thing with taxes and everything is 107, and actually priority taxes is 100. And labor is listed on the last page, but there's also freight in there, freight charges, which is an actual, isn't a purchase, it's more, it's a service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Jewel from the council? Okay, Lee, would you like to, you're chairman of finance?
Yes. Okay, so, I'm going to go ahead and move that we adopt the approval of the sole source exception for the procurement of vehicle equipment outfit from ECI Communications.
Okay.
For the amount, if you don't mind kindly, for the approximate amount of $110,000.
Okay, for the approximate amount of $110,000.
Thanks, sir. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion by Lee, seconded by George. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by raising your hand, it's unanimous. All right, that concludes our business segment of this meeting. Next is the city manager's report.
I'm going to move to Mike and get in trouble.
Okay.
Okay, got it. All right, I don't want to get yelled at. Thank you, Mayor, I'll try to be brief, I have about six items really for your information and everyone in attendance today. Speaking to our tropical activity, city staff continue to monitor tropical activity in the Atlantic Basin atop an already high water table and saturated ground elevation status. Our preparedness protocols are moving forward, a little early for us to be too far excited about that, but just kind of reassure you as you sit here today. I believe Anna did push out one public communique today. If citizens want to have additional resources from the city, Anna has prepared along with both chiefs and all of our staff here to be weather ready, to have a plan, you can visit the MoreheadCityNC.org website. A simple way to see those resources is to type in hurricane preparedness. It has its own page, and there's several resources there for citizens and the public alike. And again, you can just simply search on our city website Hurricane Preparedness for those tools and resources, and we're encouraging everybody to be weather ready, particularly our residents and our guests, as we start to focus into the height of the hurricane season. Moving on. In alignment with your strategic plan, Section 25 S5, Objective 33, the Mayor's Leadership Academy is full and is set to begin September 3rd through October 22nd. This is an eight-week program to highlight the various aspects of your city government in a small group setting. It's geared towards those who live in Morehead City Limits or the ETJ, and is for the ages 18 and above who wish to learn more about that city government and the representative duties that also boards, commissions, et cetera, as well as citizens provide to the city. These are 90-minute evening sessions, and they rotate across city departments, and actually outside of the dais in the chamber here, they'll be taking a tour of several facilities we have. Those participants gain a greater understanding of our municipal government, and each class will run from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. with light refreshment, so I'm told. And the clerk is smiling, which means I'm right, okay? Moving on, 25 S5, Objective 25, that's your strategic plan, citywide wayfinding gateway signage. Want to kind of give you an update on where we are with that. This is a carryover project from the last fiscal year. In alignment with your strategic plan, city staff will be updating our citywide gateway signage entrances to the city, in addition to our wayfinding and directional signage in the coming weeks and months, to include marking our district corridors, 2032 Plan District Corridors, and our directional signage. This also includes coordination with NC DOT, key phrase here, with the placement of major street name signage elements atop our horizontal mast signal arms, say that fast twice. So, the large arm bars you see at major intersections, Daniel's working with NC DOT at our cost to move the street sign names from the posts you see on the corner to atop those masts for clarity and also to save us maintenance when cars unfortunately mow them over and take them down. So, we're working with NC DOT to get that done. I don't have a timeline for that, even when you coordinate with NC DOT, it's really on their timeline to say, hey, yes, you can, and to band them and attach them to those masts. Key phraseology from this is city wayfinding and gateway signage, specific to our logo and our marquee, we'll be navigating through. Nick in Public Services is actually marking those locations where we have existing park signs, directional signs, this way to the boat ramp, they're designating those in addition to a vendor that we have been working for the city with some other information to mark those signs and have them replaced in a time and manner that's appropriate to the city. So, an update on our wayfinding and gateway signage, because I know the TDA was moving forward with an initiative countywide. Three more. 25 S5, Objective 26, Adopt a Marlin Program, hopefully of interest to you, because it's of interest to all of us here at the city, and we're pretty excited about this one. In alignment with the strategic plan, we're excited to share that the Adopt a Marlin Program is nearing its launch next few weeks, next few months. With the initial release of 25 unpainted marlin statues, the city will coordinate the distribution and artist selection to assure compliance with our city sign ordinance, not even going to look at Sandy on that one. Interested businesses and organizations, example, hospital, community college, et cetera, will be able to purchase one of these iconic marlins and have a designated artist decorate in the spirit of their organization and highlight the unique contributions that it brings to our city. We're working through that program. If you recall, very early in your strategic meeting last year, we mentioned that the Marlins Adopt a Program was a civic pride element that we were going to do, and we're finally getting into the stages of being able to do that. Hopefully, I'll have some rendered images, so you can actually see what one of those unpainted marlins looks like as we deploy the 25 that we have planned. So, Finance has been working diligently to kind of set the parameters along with some conversation with other departments of how we're going to go forward with that. Morehead City's Stuff the Cruiser Teacher Edition 2025, I'll make sure I get this right so that the chief doesn't yell at me, the Morehead City Police Department's Second Annual Stuff the Cruiser, Stuff the, I'm supposed to call it what now?
Big Rig.
Stuff the Big Rig event, the not a tank rig, not a tank, I got it. Saturday, August 16th, again, Saturday, August 16th, between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., Walmart Supercenter, Morehead City. If citizens or you are unable to donate on this date, you can drop off needed donations in advance to the police department at 300 North 12th Street or at the Morehead City Library at 202 South 8th Street. Items and a list of those items are listed on our city website as well, the needed and required items that are in high request and high demand and can be accepted during the regular business hours at those two physical city locations. Pretty popular event last year, they're continuing to stuff the bus, stuff the device this year. So, last one. Council project requests and timing and implementation as an update to post implementation for budget. Lastly, post-budget adoption, city staff enters into a heavy period of budget and project implementation to include closeout protocols with city staff of our fiscal year activity. In addition, the last weeks, these past last weeks, city staff has received several project requests, number one, outside the strategic plan, and number two, beyond the adopted budget CIP plan, that deplete our city staff focus and closeout of implementation. I'm asking for your help withholding some of these individual requests over to your upcoming annual retreat, which is the proper time and venue for those discussions. There are two periods where such requests are made for city council, as a kind reminder and a request for help from our staff to you, that the strategic retreat and the budget workshops are the location venues to have those mass discussions, to take any new additional project outside of what's been discussed or adopted leans into an already tight budget, and we already have limited resources for that. So, it's my humble request to you that any new ideas, new concepts, although we encourage them, even RFIs, our fancy word for request for information, really start to lean on city staff as they are heavy engaged in fiscal year closeout, fiscal year startup. So, I'm asking for your kindness in holding your good ideas and your challenges to city staff and your requests outside of regular city operations, particularly when they have fiscal limits to it, when you're asking for money and asking for projects and asking for us to execute on some things, if we could hold over to that strategic retreat so I can make sure we record them, we implement them, and we key them into the CIP. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, at this time is citizens' comments, and it's a three-minute time limit. If any citizen has any request or comments that they would like to make to the city council, please come up to the podium. And just a reminder, everyone that comes up, just name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am, I heard a couple of silence, oh, Lord, she is, but I am here, and I'm coming in the spirit of 1 Corinthians 13 and 13, where it defines love in verses 1 through 8, and in verses 9 through 13, then it tells us that love is reflection when we hear each other and we receive in love, but that's the spirit that I come. Again, I echo on what Mr. George said in his opening prayer, that we do seek God for guidance and wisdom in all things. Again, my name is Melissa Odom, 1412 Avery Street, Morehead City. I stand before you with a concern, not for individual property or individual matter, but just in the larger scheme of things, in asking the council to consider, to reconsider removing the, to reconsider removing, it is, I'm sorry, to reconsider removing the desire to enforce ordinances at a larger scheme, whether it's particular to one instance or another. I just want you to be mindful of the bigger issues it caused. My concern is for our departments in being able to enforce and to manage when we remove ordinances and the enforcement of ordinances. It doesn't have to be anything particular, I know you're probably wondering, but I'm just, I'm concerned because that problem is going to grow, and as we remove ordinance, ordinances are laws that keeps civility and keeps understandings between people, and it's going to be a situation that multiplies from one area to another, and it's going to get larger as our town continues to grow. And so, I'm just asking that as council advises to remove enforcement of certain ordinances, that we really give a larger consideration to the lawlessness that we bring into an area and the spirit of idolatry and debauchery and all these things that come with the spirit of lawlessness. We might think we're talking about a fence, for example, but it's really just the spirit of lawlessness, of not having ordinances and the position it puts our departments in and not having that support or endorsement to have something to guide them. I'm concerned because the voice of God is speaking, as Mr. George asks for guidance. God is speaking, and I'm sure with the spirit of pride that's being brought into Morehead City that we're listening all the time, and I just pray, you know, back in June when the boats caught on fire and the tents went blowing by during the big rot. We look at Texas, we look at Florida, we look at all these other areas, but God is speaking even to Morehead in the small ways, and I just ask that we give consideration to His still small voice, and also, I'm going to leave with you, for your consideration, Isaiah 1, and what happens when we don't really listen to what He turns to hear from us. Again, I thank you for your time. This is just articles to support what I was just kind of saying, the example of what happens when we don't have ordinance relations to support our department. Again, I appreciate your time, and I pray for we ask that we do, and do a voice for God.
Okay. All right, thank you, Missy.
Yeah, we'll share. Yeah? Thank you, ma'am, so much. Thank you kindly. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else in the audience would like to speak to the council?
Well, hi, I am Jacob Sewell from Troop 130, and I'm here for the Citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. Now, I just have something to ask, to ask you guys for, like, something that, like, I kind of need to do afterwards, like, I'm just asking if I can interview one of the council members, so that way I can get this requirement done and I don't have to come to another meeting to get it done.
I'm sure you can interview any council member you want up here, so you can make your choice and just let us know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, next item on the agenda, your council comments. Harvey, want to lead us off?
Well, I was a Boy Scout once, so I'm hanging in there with you, young man. Keep it up, it's a good group of people. Thank you all for coming. As you see, we're trying to get the city's work done, but please, if you have any questions or any concerns, contact any one of us, because we're here to serve. So, I'd just like to say thank you for coming tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for being here on this rainy Tuesday afternoon, taking time from your busy schedule to be here, and Missy, thank you for bringing your concerns. Jacob, thank you for being here. I was a member of Troop 130 at one time, Mr. Bob Guthrie was my troop leader at the Methodist Church, so it's good to see you here, and I would volunteer to let you interview me if you would like me to, but if you could choose any of the five of us, but I would certainly volunteer. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
Tell us what you really think.
So, anyway, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to thank our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Missy, thank you for sharing that with us, and for the young man, I remember when I was in Cub Scouts, just want to thank him for coming and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. There's three things I want to touch on in my council member comments. One is the corner of Barber and intersection of Barber and Mandy Lane, I went out there about a week ago, and I was at a stop sign, and you can't see the vehicles traveling northbound on Barber going towards to the road until, like, the last minute, especially because there's cars parked at some people's residences. I talked to council member Taylor about it, and I talked to some citizens in the area, and the citizens feel like if we could consider putting a four-way stop there, they could keep the residents safe, not just the citizens that stay in Mandy Farms, but also the passengers that travel through the area. So, that's something I wanted to point out. Also, the Marlins contract, me personally, and I can honestly say, I really don't think that, that nobody wants the Marlins to leave Morehead City, but I know we had to come to some sort of mutual agreement, so I'm prayerfully that we could work out a contract soon with Mr. Bangle Riverfront Entertainment and get the Marlins contract done. Also, I want to encourage staff in our next grant cycle to seek the Part F Grant for the WS King renovation. WS King renovation project is an $8 million, $8 million project, but if we could seek the Part F Grant, we could get a million dollars going towards that project, because you had to match, we would have to match the 500K. I think that would alleviate some of the cost burden from that project. You know, it's a lot of citizens upset about the 34.25 cent tax rate, so we just want to let the citizens know that we're working to, you know, alleviate some of that burden. Also, there's a gentleman here in attendance, Mr. Chris Monteleone, who shared some photos with council member Taylor and I about some of the black spots downtown. We know that is a downtown Morehead City, Inc. situation, but I just want to see if we could come alongside of them in any type of way and support them to deal with that problem, because some of those spots look terrible. I know I'm proud of our city, I'm proud of how it looks, and I know we need to take care of our city, so that's something that definitely want to look into improving going forward, because when tourists come to our city, I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a city that is vibrant, looks good, and that they can go back to their hometowns and brag about. But that's all I have, and pass it over to council member Taylor, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. I have to correct a little bit, I have not seen any photos about the black, but I do ride around town with my eyes, and there are certainly areas of town that needs to be improved. We have had Daniel Williams tied up for quite a bit on our, which seems never-ending project on Shepherd Street, eight at night. Hopefully, I would ask our city manager, Chris Turner, as soon as he can break free, to let, put some dedicated attention on improving the conditions in the city. I'm certainly happy to see the small crowd we have tonight, and I'm especially happy that this is the first night of televised proceedings. They won't be on immediately, they'll be about a day interval before they appear on the website, but I think it's a big step forward to allow people to know what's happening in the city without having to tromp down here in the rain and take away valuable family time. So, I hope you spread the word, and hopefully your neighbors and you will use it... So I hope you spread the word, and hopefully your neighbors and you will use it to advantage.
Richard?
All right, Mr. Taylor, I appreciate it. Again, thank everybody for coming out, Jacob. As I told you before, 283, okay? That was me, yeah. Harvey, how long ago was that, you and Boy Scout, nevermind?
I can't remember.
But no, touche for you for coming here and doing what you did, okay? We certainly appreciate it, and we need more young people like yourself to step up and do things like that. As far, again, I would like to echo what some of the other folks have said, but thanks to the staff for everything y'all have done. Mr. Taylor, that includes you as well. So, and Anna, you put out some great information. I don't know if everybody reads it, but I read just about everything that, well, I read everything that comes through that email system, I will tell you that. And Kathy, I don't know where we would be without you, and you never get to say anything, that's the whole thing about it, so. But anyhow, thank y'all for coming out, okay?
And just in close, Jacob, yeah, we appreciate you a lot. I also was Troop 283, and
Amen.
Councilman Abel's father was a troop leader there, he helped a lot with us, and I learned a lot from him. So just take everything you learn with you and just pass it on to the next generations. As you know, as you grow older and you learn more about community service, you'll learn that it's a constant momentum. It's always changing, it's always moving. And it's the job of the council, of the leaders of the community, to recognize that and to stay with those movements. Morehead City's grown a lot over the years, a lot, a whole lot since we were in the Boy Scouts, but it's still Morehead City and we're proud of it. So thank you for being here and being a part of it, and everybody else for being here. All individuals are the identity of our city, and we all contribute. I have passed out the July 8th closed session minutes, just for review. They will take action to approve them if everybody agrees, but they will remain sealed.
Here I make a motion to approve the closed session minutes of Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, and form to remain sealed.
Motion by George, seconded by Bill, any, all in favor of the motion, indicate by raising your hand, it's unanimous. With no further business on the agenda, meeting is adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.
This is a short meeting.